of the West Sacramento City Council, the Redevelopment Successor Agency and the West Sacramento Financing Authority. We're meeting tonight pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order N dash twenty-nine dash twenty, by which members of the City Council and staff are participating in the meeting by teleconference. To reduce the spread of COVID- nineteen, members of the public have been asked to participate by watching the meeting on the livestream available on the city's website or on WAVE, a cable channel twenty, and to submit comments and writing to the city court by six o'clock P M prior to the meeting. All of the public comments that are submitted to the court are provided directly to each member of the council. They're also available on the city's website, adjacent to the video feed and the agenda reports for tonight's meeting, and they are not limited in any way to three minutes or otherwise. And so all those comments are available to members of the public as well. We did not meet in close session this evening, so we're going to proceed directly to item one A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. Madam Clerk, have we received any public comments on item one A?
Good evening, Mayor Cabaldin. We did not receive any public comments this evening.
All right. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. That brings us into item one B, which is council communications. Are there any reports from our liaison assignments as noted on the council agenda assignment list for item one B? Councilmember Guerrero?
Yes, there is one report. The League of Cities Sacramento Valley Division Board Members convened and they had voted on a new board. And the following are the elected board members. Alex Chica from Live Oak, Aaron Resner from Redding, and Alex is going to be the first vice president, Aaron is the second vice president, and Treasurer, I've been voted in as Treasurer, and Melissa Suster from Chico, and also Randall Stone, State League Director. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. Are there other reports this evening? Councilmember Ledesma?
Yeah, it was past Monday, we had a meeting in the Yellow County Transportation District, and really the substance of the meeting was really focused on the Causeway Connection, which is the joining Y C T D R T line that travels back from UC Davis campus to the Med Center. And obviously COVID continues to affect ridership on both transit lines, including this line. But we did make a commitment to continue at a level that sustains the needed, the hospital needs the most trips. And so we continued on with that service at a level that both R T and Y C T D agreed with. So that was on Monday, and that was the only item of substance. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Ledesma, any other reports?
I have two. First, the Executive Committee for the United States Conference of Mayors met yesterday, and the major item that we took up was approval of a new exhaustive set of recommendations and analysis around policing in cities across the USA. The mayor of Chicago, Lori Lightfoot, and the mayor of Tampa, Jane Castor, who's the former police chief as well, along with the mayor of Cincinnati, Ohio, John Cranley, co-chairing a task force to do a top to bottom look at what cities can do, building off of the work that we've been doing at the U S Conference of Mayors, including here in West Sacramento with respect to the twenty-first century policing work with the Obama administration and with Attorney General Eric Holder previously. And I'll forward, once the publication's out, which should be soon now that the vote was taken yesterday, forward the recommendations to the council and to the chief, of course. They are wide-ranging, they are bold and fearless, also recognizing the realities of public safety and all of its dimensions across the country. One of the areas that's highlighted in the report are the handful of cities across of America that have moved forward with the sort of community crisis intervention specialist program that we adopted here at the council to reform and reorganize our police department last month. And so it's great to see West Sacramento being noted for its national leadership in this space. We're not alone, though, and there are a lot of other cities that are creating other initiatives and solutions. So I know the council's been deeply interested in this, and Councilmember Roscoe, with her extensive experience in public safety in particular, so we'll forward those recommendations. We're also going to forward the report to our colleagues in the MBK Advisory Group that's been meeting as well, because it's a really great framework for tackling some tough issues, but in a way that's smart and pragmatic and still provides leadership, but really recognizes the realities that the departments and cities and communities and neighborhoods are facing in the issue. So I'm very proud of the work that the conference has been doing in that space. We also provided an initial report of the National Working Group on Disrupting Systemic Racism, and the council's aware that I've been chairing that group along with the mayor of Atlanta, Georgia, and our recommendations are also moving forward. We're going to be proceeding to the next stage of implementation, and also reports to both the Democratic and the Republican National Conventions this month and next month to urge them to take up an agenda for cities across the country. That agenda we've been working on covers infrastructure and water quality and education and workforce development and healthcare and all the other issues as well. I've been taking the lead on the systemic racism piece and, of course, on the education and workforce elements as well. But this is an important moment to define the national agenda to be more supportive of urban issues. Council's already, I know, very, very much aware that we're in the middle of a fight for our lives in D C right now with respect to the congressional consideration of the Heroes Act. And it really has been the White House and the President that has been stonewalling the efforts to try to direct additional fiscal relief and support to cities. In California, the cities other than the five or six cities that have already received hundreds of millions of dollars, including Sacramento, but to really get some of those base resources to communities like ours, it's been a high priority for the Congress, for Congresswoman Matt Souey, for Senator Harris, for Senator Feinstein. So we're stepping up here locally and in California, but the White House has been, has really tried to politicize the issue about cities and states, and it's just so critical that for the basic services, for enforcements, for safety, for evictions, for economic security, for unemployment, all of those reasons that this act passed and that include those kinds of essential supports. Second, the Transportation Committee for the Sacramento Area Council of Governments met on Thursday. Council knows I chaired that committee, and we've been working for the last several months on a proposal from Public Works Directors in several jurisdictions in the region who wanted to shift regional transportation funding to a formula basis. And without going back into the weeds again on this, this is a major problem and a major threat for communities like ours. All the formula discussions are essentially say, hey, what if we just sent out all the money at the region to cities and counties based on their population and the amount of road miles that they have? Well, Sacramento County is the lead agency that's been the proponent of this, but the big losers in the region, if it were to happen, are Sacramento, Rancho Cordova, the city of Sacramento, and a handful of others. And that's because we are slated for the highest levels of growth in the region. So if you allocate transportation funding using a rearview mirror and just allocate it based on the past, then we won't be able to serve the growth that we are now legally mandated under the regional housing needs allocation formulas and everything else in order to meet. And so this is a very, very, very important battle that is going on right now, principally with Sacramento County, although there are another four or five cities and counties in the region that are also in that camp. So it came to the Transportation Committee on Thursday. The staff at CACOG recommended against moving to a formula, a formula distribution for a couple of reasons. One being that if there was a formula distribution, CACOG staff noted that West Sacramento and others would probably push for a formula based on future growth, and it would deadlock if that were to happen. And second, that the state and federal governments, whose money it is that we allocate, the region itself doesn't have any revenue sources, would likely not approve any funding plan that was based on a formula, because the federal and state governments have given us these funds in order to reduce congestion, fight climate change, reduce air pollution. There are specific objectives that have to be met, and that can't be accomplished if you simply send the money out on a formula basis. So this is, I can't emphasize enough, this is a big battle. In Transportation Committee, though, I'm very, very pleased to report we got a unanimous vote in favor of making modifications to the current system but not moving in any way to a formula. The full board will be taking this up on the twentieth of August, and Sacramento County is, you know, let's be direct, they're pulling out all the stops on this one. They are actually slated for one of the lowest levels of growth in the future. And so the sort of rearview mirror planning is to their benefit in some ways, but not really, because if the state and federal governments would draw our authority to allocate those funds, nobody will have transportation dollars to expend. So we'll be having that fight coming up on August twentieth, and it really is critical for us in terms of our ability to build the roads and the trails and to do the road rehabilitation and the pothole repairs and everything else that are so critical in our community. We don't have, we're not a big city. We certainly fight above our weight class, though, at the regional scale. So far, you know, so far, we're doing okay, and we have some good allies, but this is going to be a big one on August twentieth. All right. With that, then, we'll proceed to item C, which is appointments to boards and commissions. We have none of those this evening. That brings us to the consent agenda, which is item two. Are there any separate questions or comments on item two?
I actually have a comment.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Roscoe?
Thank you. More a comment than a question. I just wanted to add that items like this make me incredibly proud to serve on this council. There are some that criticize efforts by the city to get involved in matters that they deem should belong to other agencies or other departments. And in this case, the Learning Ladder came about by the advocacy of some leaders, some women leaders in this city, well before I became on this council, and people who spoke for the mothers in our community and talked about the need for childcare. The Learning Ladder is West Sacramento's, one of West Sacramento's premier childcare centers, if not the most premier childcare center. And I know the nature and quality of the program because I had my children attending the program for two years. My son Mateo really enjoyed having the opportunity to learn and grow from the high-quality education provided by this city. At our last meeting, at the end of the meeting, I brought up the incredible need for parents to receive city supports. We're all grappling with tremendous challenges, and I personally can attest to the fact that today was our first day in this household with distance learning. And while relatively, you know, smooth based on some of the challenges I've heard in the region with respect to distance learning, I will say that it's still very much a challenge, and it's one of those situations where I don't believe that I can go to work and believe that my children can learn how to do their schooling without me standing by their side interpreting what they have to do along the way. So with that, looking at item number two, this is exactly what I'm talking about, where we're talking, where we're needing daycare or childcare or even extensions of school for parents who have to choose. There are a lot of people who can't afford the daycare that is being offered, and it is very expensive. I mean, obviously, there's one caregiver to, say, nine students, and with social distancing, it makes it very difficult. But I'm proud that our city is leading the way to help families, and I just hope that we can consider opportunities to do that further. That could mean the difference between a parent choosing to leave their child at home alone while they go to work, or even worse, with inadequate or inappropriate caregivers, which could cause even worse problems. And based on my profession every day, this is not just storytelling, folks. This is a real deal. This is something that happens even absent COVID. So I want to commend our staff for bringing this, and I really do challenge our council to start thinking about what else we can do to help families as they are navigating these new challenges with distance learning and children being at home. Tomorrow, I have to do a bail hearing. My house is small, and my children will be doing their distance learning on two separate computers, and I'll have two others that are around my little house. And as I'm doing the bail hearing, they're going to unfortunately possibly hear the bad details of what it is that is causing me to try to keep someone in custody, and that those aren't details that I wish my kids to hear. So if I could make the choice to not be home, I would do it in a heartbeat. And so with that, I want to move the item and ask for the council's support.
All right. Thank you very much, Councilmember Roscoe. I very much appreciate your leadership in the space, your personal, how vested personally you are in it, like so many other members of our community and families that are struggling with this. I'm an educator. I teach at the university, and we've switched to distance learning. It's my profession, it's my job, and it's really hard. And I teach twenty-two-year-olds, thirty-year-olds, forty-year-olds, who aren't running around, who I'm not also trying to monitor their behavior, and all the other, the rest of family life as well. And I feel so, so much for you and all the other parents in the community that are grappling with this on top of everything else that's going on in the community at the moment. And you're quite right. We were, West Sacramento was, we were the first medium-sized or small-sized city in California to get funding from the tobacco tax, you know, way back now, you know, a decade and a half ago, for our nation-leading efforts to provide universal access to preschool, high-quality preschool, including childcare in this community. That effort was built on what Councilmember City Tuttle led, when she really, when she came on the council and all by herself, would not let go of making sure that the city at least started to first talk about childcare, then start to put it in at some of our plans. And then she identified funding mechanisms. They were small, they were modest, they were just like opening up the door. And then we got the, we began this universal preschool program, and I really want to also acknowledge Councilwoman Caroline Castillo Pearson, who helped to lead that effort as our mayor pro tem in order to put that together. Mayor Pro Tem Sandine and Oscar Baiega is just, you know, there are dads and parents and guys in the community that are just as interested and have just as much responsibility for the issue. But there's been a long line of folks that have participated in this effort, and not without controversy opposition. I think we all, you know, we all know that today's, you know, the school district and we are working hand in glove as partners in this work, but it hasn't always been this case and been the case. And there have been a couple of school board members and some community members who've been, done exactly what you said. They said, no, the city, the city should not be involved in any kind of preschool or childcare. That's the school district's job alone. And as you know, from the school two-by-two where we meet, two of us meet with two members of the school board on a regular basis, they've made it clear, loud and clear, that they depend on this partnership. The school district cannot do this alone. They cannot handle all of the needs by themselves, and even though they may not all agree on the school board, that, you know, the vast majority of them, and certainly parents around the community, have expressed their support for Learning Ladder, for all of our extended programs, the summer camp as well. And so I just want to join you, but also thank you for continuing to highlight the critical need here and to support and to champion these kinds of efforts. And more, I know you're working with the city manager and others on more to come, and certainly, you know, today of all days with the beginning of this instruction for so many families, it's extraordinarily timely. All right. So what's that? Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. All, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. We have no public comments on the consent agenda, so Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the roll.
Mayor Cabaldin?
Yes.
Thank you. Hi, I just wanted to add a couple of comments also. And definitely appreciated the need for expanding access to child, early childcare education for our young children. And, you know, having a grandson here at home and experiencing what the distance learning looks like for our early learners and helping them to prepare, early learning is extremely important for their success in their future of their educational life and career. And so whatever we can do to ensure that we increase access to early childcare education by early educators who are qualified and trained to be able to provide that is extremely important. Sitting on the universal preschool for West Sacramento, I think it was about, you know, ten years back, and it was extremely important when first by funding was drying up that we maintain access to early childcare education and trying to do what we can to do fundraising activities and sustaining what we did here in West Sacramento. So I greatly appreciate what the city has done in enhancing access through Learning Ladder and support, especially for children with special needs, as my grandson has a condition which needs additional support. And I am grateful for the early educators who allowed onsite support as my grandson was receiving language education when he was having difficulties speaking. So I just want to extend that everything we can do to help our youth, he's thriving, he's doing really well, but still needs additional supports at home, and looking forward to seeing what we can do on the city, on behalf of the city, to support our children.
Great. And it's exciting to hear that next time we have a vote on the home run, that perhaps it will be unanimous. All right, Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the roll on the consent agenda.
Yes. Mayor Pro Tem Sandine.
Aye.
Councilmember Roscoe.
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma.
Aye.
Councilmember Guerrero.
Aye.
And Mayor Cabaldin.
Aye. All right. So that motion carries. So next, we're going to proceed to item three, which is update and actions on the city's COVID- nineteen response. And council recall, on these items, we've shifted, we shifted a bit ago to focusing the council's questions and conversation on the highlighted portions of the report. The report that the city manager provides, for the most part, is cumulative across the entire six months of the emergency. And so our focus tonight is on the highlighted, excuse me, on the highlighted portions, and that's pursuant to the ad hoc committee of myself and the mayor pro tem that has been meeting on a weekly basis. We've also determined that we're going to shift this item to regular monitoring and guidance from that subcommittee. So the council will continue to receive, essentially a receive and file report on a weekly basis that includes all of the information, but we won't be agendizing this, the item every single week as we have in the past, based on this change. And that subcommittee will make, will, in conjunction with the city manager, determine if there are items that either require a council action or the judgment of the subcommittee that the council might wish to have a, you know, particular agenda item on that topic or on that special subject matter. So that will be the way we'll be handling in the weeks to come. But for tonight, item three, Mr. Director of Emergency Services, if you would.
I thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'll just jump right to it. I have a very brief report tonight, not too many new updates, but the one that is probably most significant since we met last week was, it was well in the news about the data issues that the state had experienced around case data. And so that does hit us the local level, the county level, and I have gotten some information from the county, speaking with the county administrator and other coordination among our E O C staff and theirs. And it's unclear at this point how the data will be reflected in the numbers that need to be updated based on the, you know, our share of the three hundred thousand or so cases that were sort of underreported due to that data issue at the state level. What I can tell you, though, is that at least for this week, and probably reflected in numbers from last week, some of those cases are being reported as if they're occurring in those weeks, including this week and potentially even next week, as they discover some of the test results that should have been reported. My understanding is they're going to do their best to true up those numbers so we can have an accurate reflection of when the cases actually occurred, but it's more of a, just a sort of a heads up that for the data next week, and already in the numbers that are reflected during the current week, it may not be an accurate reflection of actual case data from the current week, if that makes sense. It's going to be likely inflated based on the makeup data from the state. So the number we continue to watch very closely, because we do have more reliance on this figure, is the hospitalization rate in the county, which we believe is to the point where it includes cases where a person from West Sacramento may end up hospitalized in another county, say Sacramento County. But also the number across the county is a good barometer for how the cases are coming, you know, progressing unfortunately to the point where someone might have to be hospitalized. And that number continues to remain fairly steady, but we will continue to watch that. We'll look for the case data to be trued up, like I said, and try to normalize those numbers. You may see a little bit of a different format in this table going forwards because of that. If we get updated numbers from July, I'd like to break that down by week so I can show you what the true trend line has been, as opposed to showing it in the full month like I did last week. So bear with us on that. Like I said, we're working with the county, they're working with the state, and we'll try to get as accurate as possible numbers going forward. The only other update of significance I was going to give tonight was related to Project Home Key. Nothing definitive yet, but we are applying tomorrow for the acquisition of multiple motel properties. You know, there's a very limited amount of money in the Sacramento region. We will be asking for a significant portion of it for those motel acquisitions, but I can't tell you today that, you know, we're closing tomorrow on any of those properties, but that's not what the program asks you to do at this point. You have to identify the properties, you have to show that due diligence is in progress, things like phase one environmental assessments, property assessments to look at what repairs might be needed, and appraisals. Appraisals are actually now more important than ever. One of the unfortunate things we learned since the last meeting is that the state, I'll put it this way, they clarified their rules so that at least in motels that don't appraise for more than a hundred thousand, which is their limit per door, their expectation is that the city, if the price is actually above that, or actually above appraised value, the city would be making up those numbers, those dollar amounts. So that's a significant difference between, you know, a straight hundred thousand dollars per unit, especially when you're dealing with property owners that have an inflated sense of value for what their property's worth. So we are running into some challenges around that. We're doing the best we can with those negotiations, but in the meantime, we are applying on the basis that we have multiple properties that we've identified, and we're doing the due diligence on each of those. All of the phase ones, the property assessments, and the appraisals are all underway for those properties that we're applying for tomorrow. We'll see what happens from there. We'll see what the state does with these regional applications and regional pools, and we'll be ready to go if, depending on whatever happens with our applications, we'll be watching for the statewide pool that hopefully will be making more money available later on. But, you know, it's kind of a moving target, but we're doing our best to take advantage of the moment with that program, and I'll continue to report as we learn more in this report, but also if there are property acquisitions that progress, you'll see those as well. So I believe that's all I had to focus on tonight. There are a couple other sections highlighted with new updates as normal, but I can take any questions you have for this time. Thanks.
Any other questions? Councilmember Ledesma?
Thank you. Thank you, Aaron, for the update. Just a couple of clarifying questions on the data piece. So what you're saying is, what the state's suggesting is, is these may have been, as an example, a case discovered or actually tested in May now discovered and maybe showing up in this week's, is that an example of what?
Sort of, yeah. My understanding is the timeframe was more in the July range when the data gap occurred. And so you're right about what you said, though, that that case would be showing up this week, even though the test and confirmation may have occurred back in July. And there may be a number of those that are reflected in the numbers from this week and even next week, but they're likely to have happened in July.
At a time when we obviously saw surges, we're going to kind of get, get an understanding of the data then to see if we are indeed coming down from that surge.
Absolutely. That's the key in that question, that if, once the data is put back together in the correct way, we're hoping to see what that trend line looked like during July and now into August, and hopefully seeing that the most recent measures to, you know, the most recent state order to shut down certain activities has had a positive effect. But we'll see.
Okay. And then on the second part, on the Project Room Key, I totally get the challenge that the, sort of the appraisal, how the appraisal value plays in against what's been proposed. So my question's really kind of a procedural one. You said we start the hearing or you keep us updated. The council will see any decision or approval of any purchase price agreement? Decision or, or approval of any purchase price agreement. Mayor, mayor, I just want to make sure there's some mechanism that we see. When we actually get to a purchase, what, what then?
Yes, that's right, so it'll be the normal procedure, if we were buying or even selling a property, we would bring it to the council. For initial direction and then any, any. Real estate, you know, documents that would accompany the, the. Transaction would have to be approved by council, so in terms of the process though, it is a little, a little bit different and and a part of the action last week was to. Provide authorization for the city manager and by extension the staff are negotiating terms and and completing due diligence. We, we approved the budget last week to allow us to approve, do all the due diligence work, phase ones, appraisals. To get to the point where we can truly hopefully reach terms with some of these owners, the appraisal is the key step, we need to know. You know, kind of where they're at, where the appraisal value is, what the state will, will, will pay. And hopefully there isn't a gap, but if there is, we would, we would have to bring that back to council to address it. Along with the normal acquisition process you mentioned.
Yeah, and again, it's just make really for me, Erin, to make sure that, that, that there's no changes to that process because of the nature of the world. Like I said, I trust you and the team negotiated well prior project, so. But again, just wanted to check in, so thank you.
Same process, thanks.
Councilmember Rowell.
Thank you, just want to thank. You, Erin and Rowell for all the work, you know, I know it was a lot of work packaging all of that and you guys have put many, many man-hours on that, so thank you for. Getting that taken care of so, so quickly and.
Thank you, and Mark Sawyer.
Great, oh yeah. Joining the team to help make it successful, so appreciate all you've done.
Thanks.
All right, yeah, the, and thanks, Erin, for the work on the, the data side. You know, in the last week, we lost the, the 12th West Sacramento to COVID-19, this is, this has been a, the pandemic is, is. Been the source of a lot of controversy and a lot of arguments. But also it's cost our, some of our neighbors and our family members and friends in the community their lives. And the lives of their family members and. And at the same time, the communities rallied behind those families and behind, behind those residents and also in so many other ways around serving. Folks experiencing homelessness, folks who don't have food, folks who are, whose jobs are rent or are at risk, and this has been. You know, this has been a crisis of every kind of proportion in the community and I know we're all proud of our city. For, for how we've come together and how we have put up with, with what. In, in the end of the day are some pretty severe inconveniences and some big challenges and we talked about some of them tonight. And some of our residents have paid an even steeper price. And it's why we have been, you know, as the council, we've been working so hard on, on the services, we've been working very hard locally and nationally around. Around testing and getting this data right and making sure that our policy answers are right, even though at the end of the day, we don't make most of the decisions, they're mostly at the county and the state level. But, you know, as we take up other items, it's, let's not forget the, 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 the cost that has been paid even in our own small town. As a result of the pandemic and and continue to do what I know the, the council's doing, which is out there, you know, reminding folks to. Stay home at all, you know, at every possible opportunity, stay home and to maintain distance everywhere, to wear masks everywhere. To do all the steps that we know are effective, we know exactly what works because we've done it. And so there's something about the, the report itself, Erin, it's just, just a reminder that of. The human costs of what we're facing here in our community, what that means to so many, to so many families and coworkers and friends and neighbors in West Sacramento. The other on Home Key is just, this is, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to, for everyone. And for motel owners who have the opportunity to, to make a transition. To, you know, to outside of motels that are, that have been struggling in many ways since the nineteen fifties. For, for the community's vision for West Capitol Avenue and their hope that we would have a main street that was. Safe and clean and welcoming and, and inclusive for everyone. And, and most importantly, for the, for those residents of our community. Who are either experiencing homelessness now or were and have found a space in Project Room Key or elsewhere in town. Or who are worried about it every moment right now because of, of, of the prospect of, of eviction months later or. Of financial insecurity and it is such an important opportunity, that's why the council gave. So much support and flexibility and resources to move forward, to get to the front of the line and I really appreciate the work that. That the whole staff team's been doing and also the motel owners that have been, you know, collaborating, trying to figure out a way to make this work. I think many of them do know and those that don't hopefully will know, this, this, this has not come along this kind of an opportunity where the, where the state using federal funds would be able to. Make a financial transaction possible around the transfer of motel that never otherwise would work. You know, we, the city has been trying with motel owners to, 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 to reduce the number of total motel rooms on the avenue and. And to get some of the more challenging motels in the past out of that, out of that sector and it's hard. I mean, the economics are really hard and having the state and federal government's support allows us to be innovative and to. Take the plans off the shelf that our community members built back when we incorporated their vision about what they hoped that we could become as a community. This, that gives us the ability to go right to the front of the line, but it's not enough to get all the way on a project and I just, I hope. Our partners among the motel owners will, 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 will get across that line. And, and, and help to make this transition for us, for the, for homeless residents. And for themselves, because there's, there's, there's not going to be a better opportunity. For them in many of these properties as well, so let's, I know our fingers are crossed, as Councilmember Ledesma said tonight and as many of us at last, last meeting. You know, we have to cut a deal that makes sense also for the city government and for the community. What makes sense is a lot easier for us right now because of Project Home Key, but that's doesn't, that's not a blank check. And we have to be responsible stewards of the, of, not just our money, we have to be responsible stewards of the state and federal money too. While we're, while we're doing our best to, to, to assure housing for, for these residents in the kind of West Capitol Avenue that, that they deserve too. So I know, as I said, our fingers are crossed, thank you, we're going to get that thing across the line. You know, at the, at the counter, we're going to be among the first to, 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 to get that application in and be ready to get that award and then sprint in order to make it happen, but. We're going to, we're going to need that cooperation and a little bit of luck in order to make it happen, but if we succeed. The, the, the benefits for our community and particularly for reducing both homelessness and the impact of homelessness in our community are going to be extraordinary, they will also be once in a lifetime. So, Councilmember Roscoe, and then we'll, they will conclude this item.
Thank you, and, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your comments, I agree wholeheartedly as to everything you just said. As a child, I was a resident of one of those motels and know from that perspective. That when some folks hit hard times and have to reside in places that they wouldn't necessarily call home, that they could, you know, are appreciative of all of the assistance they can get, so. I want to commend staff. Mark Sawyer, who has worked tirelessly on the Project Room Key program. Along with the Yolo County Children's Alliance, who has been providing services and also our community. And I, I include Mayor Pro Tem Sandin, who has delivered sandwiches from local businesses to the residents to help. Curb their hunger pains and Councilmember Ledesma, who partnered with Supervisor Viejas to make pancakes and breakfast food. For the residents as well as just our neighbors, our neighbors who come out of the goodness of their hearts and bring pizzas or, or just, just want to go and spread some goodness. We had a, a community event this past weekend and I, I will say that the outpouring of support and generosity. And the, just the willingness to, to help a neighbor was allowed, it was live, alive. It was loud, it was proud and it gave me a, a sense of inspiration. Because I believe that even though there's really hard times, everybody's feeling it, there's a lot of activity that's being spread around, but there's just so much hope. And programs like these and the people that support it are, are fantastic and so thank you so much for your comments, I won't extend them any further, but just. Just makes me proud and I, I look forward to seeing Project Home Key come to fruition and, and again echoing the mayor's and, and. City manager's comments about the blank check, I, I agree wholeheartedly on that, so thank you.
All right, thank you, and with that, we're going to proceed to the council calendar, Ms. Berlin.
Evening, Mayor, councilmembers, no updates from me tonight.
All right, and assuming no questions on the no updates, we'll proceed to the city manager report.
No reports tonight, thank you.
Right, city attorney reports?
It's a trifecta, no report tonight.
Right, staff direction for members of the council, Councilmember Ledesma?
I'm, I'm just waiting for the day Amanda can say something again, on the council calendar, some of them, we miss them, so. So hopefully Amanda, we'll get your, we'll get your time.
All right, thank you. For sure, and we have no future agenda item requests, so is Councilmember Ledesma, your mic's already on?
Yes.
To the honors.
To adjourn the meeting.
And I'll second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Ledesma and seconded by Councilmember Roscoe that the meeting stands adjourned, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on the motion to adjourn?
Councilmember Guerrero.
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma.
Aye.
Councilmember Roscoe.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Sandin.
Aye.
And Mayor Cabaldin.
Aye, with that, the motion carries, the meeting stands adjourned, thank you all and have a great, a safe night.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.